We are at Granberry City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street in Granberry, Texas. And you can watch this on www.granberry.org/live. If, I guess that's where everybody is tonight, watching it on screen, I assume. And you can also go in at a later time, pull it up and check and say, yeah, they did say that, or they didn't say that. I don't see Mr. Lotta in the audience. Is he? Is he here? He's not? Okay. Okay, I'm gonna ask if Mr. Kaufman will give us the invocation. We'll stand, then we'll go to the pledge. Thank you.
Let us pray. Father God, we just come to you tonight thanking you for the opportunity to serve our community and this, thanking you for the blessings you've given us that just allow us to stand here tonight and worship you and the freedom that we have. We just thank you for the blessings of our community, the richness that you blessed us with and the quality of life that you provided for us. Just help us tonight to make good decisions, help the council to have a good clear vision of what it is that makes best sense for Granberry tonight. And just thank you for the opportunity to be here with them. Just thank you that I'm here as the city manager and you blessed me so much. Thank you for that. And Lord, just be with our folks that are here as they've traveled here to be with us tonight. Pray you give them a safe travel home and a blessed week this week. We just pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Now, if you join us to the pledge of the United States of America flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the city, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
That's a special pledge on Election Day, certainly. Okay. We're gonna move to number four, proclamation presentation, city council and city manager issue encouraging statements and recognize city staff. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have some bragging on team members that we need to acknowledge for a few minutes, a couple of different areas. But first, I want to talk about our electric department and all the work that they do. I don't know if y'all experienced the electric storm, if you're on the city grid or the tri-county grid or the United Co-op grid, but the lightning storm this weekend took a lot of folks out of power and our guys were out servicing our 3,700 customers alongside the other folks servicing their customers. And I'm really proud that our team was able to get it taken care of in an afternoon, basically four or five hours, and they worked hard to do that after the lightning storm. And also this morning, they were out bright and early. There was a piece of equipment that had been run over in an alley and they were out doing that real early. So they were trying to keep it where businesses could function this morning and they were successful doing that. They also recently put up the new light bulbs around the building square with the warmer-colored bulbs for the season and we're excited about how that looks. And, you know, these little things that happen behind the scenes keeps our quality of life good. They replace streetlights without somebody having to call them, you know, without any of us seeing them. They see them before we do in most situations. And they take care of our electric system throughout and they've been busy for the last three years upgrading the electric system, replacing 40- and 50-year-old power lines with new lines that need to be replaced. And so these are just little things that go on around, they're expensive things too, that go on around our community that I just wanted to highlight that these guys do a great job. We also have some new licenses, the certification. Joshua Drack just received his Class D water operator license. Congratulations to him. Stephen Sweeney and Travis Watkins both received their P-25 certification for the Harris radio system. That is not an easy feat and we are privileged to have two gentlemen that are trained and receive that certification working in our IT department and handling that regional radio network. Some of y'all might not know that Granberry has a regional radio network for law enforcement and fire and EMS and anybody that wants to join in adjacent counties. And currently, we have people in E wrath County, Somerville County, Hood County, and soon-to-be Parker County and Fort Worth, Tarrant County, on our system where we can communicate with other law enforcement agencies and work together. So if there's a pursuit going, they don't have to patch in and make a cellphone call to try to find out who to talk to in Hood County if they're pursuing someone or they're just a great communication tool. And I'm proud of Granberry for leading that. The council put that together and funded it and because it was duly noted that it was way past due. And the law required us to have these type radios by 2015 and we got them, I guess, rolled out in about 2023. Took a little while because of the COVID event, but I'm really proud of that system and the folks that worked so hard to make it happen. We've got over 1,000 people using that radio station or radio program right now. So it just continues to grow and it takes staff to make that happen. Without our team members, we can't make anything happen. I don't know if you noticed the two new statues in our park. The Corville Jones statues were created and installed by the late Ken Hill. He was a former mayor. He's also a very successful drugstore company here on the square and then invented some software and did really well in life. And he passed away and left those two pieces at no cost to the city. And so they've been installed and it's kind of the entrance to the new sculpture garden that the Shanley Art Group putting together. And then also Silent Prey is the name of a sculpture next to the city hall up back on Shanley property. And it's a lady that was also, she lived up at Comanche Peak and I don't know when she passed away, sometime in the 70s or 80s of this last decade. So she was a friend to Ken Hill and he wanted to honor her with that statue. And so those have been installed and we're proud to see that. We do have a couple of videos that we might try to show you. The first one is about the sculptures, how it was installed, if you could show that. This is not a little statue. It's about 16 feet tall. Sculpture, I should say. You may not be able to see it with that, but it's an Indian being attacked by a mountain lion on the back of his horse. And Mr. Jones is a well-renowned sculptorist, well-known throughout the United States, reputable, has art pieces all over the United States, Capitol Building and other places. That's about a $600,000 gift right there. And then we also were successful, I guess you got another one? Show it while you're at it, please, sir. And then another thing I would like to highlight is the successful installation of the new play features for the kids at Lambert Branch Park. I think we got a video of that. This is more of a natural-type theme playground equipment.
Exciting new play features have been added for kids ages 2 to 12 at Lambert Branch Park, located at the corner of Rucker and North Brazos Streets. Young adventurers can test their balance on netted rope climbs and the playful wobble leaf. These additions are made from sustainable materials designed for outdoor play in Texas weather. They don't get too warm or too cool. For safety, the play area's base is cushioned with soft shredded rubber nuggets. Lambert Branch Park also offers a fishing pier, a spacious open area perfect for recreational activities and events, and picnic tables throughout. Plus, it connects directly to the hike and bike trail for those who want to explore even more.
So you wonder why we went all natural like that. It looks natural. I took my grandsons to one of our play parks and there was a tree log that had been cut and laying there and they actually played on that log more than they played on the $100,000 thing. And so we learned that kids like nature and so we tried to buy playground equipment that's similar to nature and put it in that park. So hats off to Aaron McLean for heading up that project and putting that together. And of course, his team. Without his team, he can't get much done because we got him running around doing all the administration for everything in the Internal Services Department. Also, we have appreciation to all those that organized the great Granberry cleanup that we recently had. If we could show that video, I'd appreciate it. I didn't know. I can't thank you all enough for taking the time out of your busy mornings on a Saturday morning at this time of year to do this. It's very important and I think our community benefits from it in ways they don't even begin to understand.
One, two, three. Keep Granberry beautiful!
It's just another effort on our part to try to keep Granberry beautiful. We want to keep it beautiful for our residents, but we also like to keep it beautiful for all of our tourists and visitors that come here every day.
And the last department I would like to recognize is the purchasing department. I don't think people realize that the city has a $60 million budget and then we've probably got $100 million worth of capital projects going. And every one of those procurements require special purchasing laws to be followed. And we've got a great purchasing staff that follows those rules and makes sure that we take care of business the way the local government code requires us. But about $30 million of the operating budget goes through the procurement process and we couldn't make it without them. All the requests for proposals and requests for qualifications for special services goes through this department. They do the advertising, they draft the documents, they receive the documents, they put together scoring teams from internal council, or not council, but employees and stakeholders that are involved in that project and they score those RFPs and RFQs and then make recommendations to me and then to the council to make those final decisions. But it's very important that we follow all the laws pertaining to procurement. And I'm really proud, they're part of the finance department and you know how great a job our finance team is. It's just an extension of them. What else they do, you know, just like this morning, I bet, I would just almost guarantee you that they had to be there real early in the morning so the electric department could get the parts they needed for that emergency repair. Last Sunday during the outage, they were there providing the parts out of the warehouse. They also ensure that the inventory is there for what the guys need, whether it's the water meters or the trash bags for the square for the receptacles or the parks. Any supplies that we have, they keep on hand and they make sure that it doesn't deplete and we always have what we need. And sometimes it's tires, specialty tires for specialty piece of vehicles that are equipment that we can't just get off the shelf. And so they're always looking. We have to have an inventory of water meters, electric meters, and all the parts that go to putting in a water meter and electric meter. And there's just a lot of little components that have to be assembled on a regular basis and they make sure that those parts are available. So just wanted, hats off to Kristi Russell and her team. They do a great job for us and I'll conclude my comments for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Staff, our council?
Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Bell.
Two things. I think most people know that the city acquired the Granberry Plaza this year and there was extensive discussion around the condition of the building and some of the work that needed to be done. And that work has already started. I drove through the plaza, drove down Pearl Street the other day and the city employees were out working on the building and replacing lights, doing a lot of different things. And the other thing that in the plaza that needed to be repaired and replaced years ago was the fountain. And if you go in there today, and I drove by again today and made special notice to look in and take, I haven't seen it in person yet, I will on Friday, Tammy. But the fountain looks absolutely terrific. So great job by the city on all the things that needed to be done to that building. Number two, I wanted to give a shout out to Aaron and the Parks Department. This time of year, there's so many things going on with the holidays coming up. We were driving downtown this morning, dropped my wife off at Ford Training Center today and a truck passed us going the other way with all sorts of Christmas decorations on it. So Christmas decorations have already started to go up in the city. It's a big process. The Parks Department does a great job doing that. So all of us can enjoy how beautiful the city looks around the holidays. So I just wanted to recognize that team for all their hard work and making Granberry look beautiful around the holidays. Thank you.
Okay. Other council?
Um, I just wanted to, actually, I just wanted to give a shout out to actually all of our citizens in Granberry. Last couple of months, I've been kind of traveling around the state, going to various conventions and conferences and meeting with Tech 21, Tech Dot, talking about 377 and taking care of some of the businesses that we need to do for Granberry. But whenever I go anywhere, somebody come up, they'll see that you're from Granberry and you got, it's on your name tag or on your shirt or whatever, and they always come up to you and they say, you know, you are so lucky to live in Granberry. It is such a wonderful place. We love visiting there. We love going there to the square. We love going to the Opera House. We love going to Granberry Live. We love your restaurants and all the historical venues that you have there and all the celebrations that you have there every weekend. It's just such a great city. But what they tell me is that the thing that they love the most about Granberry is the people that we have here. They're so friendly and they're so helpful and they make their stay here just that much better. And so that's what's really great about Granberry. You know, we're made, the town is made up, it's got asphalt, it's got concrete, it's got bricks, it's got wood. That's what makes up all the structures here in town. That's what the city is. But I would tell you that the community of Granberry is made up of the citizens and all the people here, what you do and what you do to portray Granberry is what makes Granberry the greatest city in Texas. And I'm so happy to live here now and I just wanted to thank all of you for everything you do. Whatever you're doing, keep doing it because it's working. Thank you.
I agree. Other council? I asked, want to, we'll move to public comments in just a second, but I want to make a comment about that. We have Mr. Haif, who's gonna speak for, what do we have, two or three minutes? What do we say? You have three minutes. Mr. Haif has provided the council with some of the comments that he plans on making tonight, complete with photos, complete with the information that we may need to make a decision as we get later into the deal here. And I encourage that. Communication, I encourage, I encourage you coming, but also encourage the email communications that happen, particularly when you bring such detailed information to us. It, you know, it makes our job just a little bit easier. And the, one other thing, it's on Black Star that we saw, there was some controversy about the lady, the statue last year sometime. If you really want to know about this lady, go to her obituary and you will find it in Portland, Oregon, and her name is Eunice Prots. So don't go looking for Black Star because that's not her name. This is a lady and based on the love that that community had for her, I think you'll find that this is a statue out here that exemplifies the heart that beats here in the city of Granberry as well. So we're ready to move to public comments on agenda items for non-public agenda items. And I think, I think your agenda item is a public one, Mr. Haif?
Yep.
Yeah, it's public. So we'll, if you don't mind, we'll just get to you when we do the public hearing? That works? Okay. We'll move to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routine, are previously discussed items and will be approved with one motion. However, should a member of the city council wish to discuss any items, said item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered under the deliberation agenda. Does anyone want to bring anything forward? Okay, do I hear a motion to pass the consent agenda? So moved. Second. Motion being second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. That will pass 6-0. We are all here. Okay. Now, this is a public, this will be a public hearing. We'd like to hear from staff and then we will hear from the public. So 7.1, we will consider adopting ordinance number 24-64 and ordinance number 24-65 approving the request of Wayne Lee to, one, amend the thoroughfare plan contained within the 2016 comprehensive plan and, two, change zoning from light commercial and planned development R7 single-family residential, R8.4 single-family residential, R10 single-family residential and townhome to planned development R7 single-family residential. It's located at 1101 on Loop 567. So, Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor, council. Before I turn this over to our Director of Community Development, I'd like to just say that Mr. Wayne Lee and his bride are here and they are the owners of this property. They bought it and I want to give you a little history. I sat down with him last Monday, him and his wife, and talked about this project to learn more about it. They bought the property in 2004 and developed it, was working towards development in 2006 and 2007, received preliminary plat for a planned development. And as y'all know, in 2007, eight, nine, the bottom dropped out and financial things. And so he had a bunch of other developments going that were kind of like low-hanging fruit. He went to finish those up and then he took a little trip up to Kansas City and helped build a seminary up there and raised a bunch of money and got that paid for. And then he came back in 2011 and started working on this project again. So it's my privilege to bring this forward 24, 20 years later, after he began his project in Granberry. Mr. Lee's developed about 350 subdivisions throughout the metroplex area. So we're not dealing with a rookie here and as you can see, he's ready to call it quits. He's telling me this is his retirement plan to get out of this business. So I don't know if he'll really retire, but you know, he's trying to finish this project finally. Bella Vista was a subcomponent of this and now Villa Vista is the overall arching development. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Wowie to walk us through what the P&amp;Z and the staff has been looking at. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. So this is our regular slide where we introduce the project and it shows the aerial of the site location. The property, the subject of this request is outlined in teal. It fronts onto Nettie Bacchus to the east, to the north is the Loop 567 and to the west is Lipan Highway. Much of the surrounding area is undeveloped. As referenced earlier, the Bella Vista project to the north and east of the property is currently under development for single-family residential. And there are some residential nearby, but not many. Nettie Bacchus School is to the east of Bacchus Road. And there's not an updated preliminary plat submitted with this application, so we're just looking at the two components, the thoroughfare plan and the zone change. This shows the zoning of the area. The site is an existing planned development. Much of the surrounding area is remaining in interim holding, which is a holding district until development comes along. There is R7 in the area to the north and to the northeast. And further away from the site, there's other residential zoning existing and development. First, the thoroughfare plan. The lower right side picture or diagram on your screen circles the area where the existing planned thoroughfare collector two-lane undivided street would be located. However, throughout this project for nearly 20 years, it's not been recognized. The applicant has proposed to move that collector to the interior of the project, which is shown on the upper diagram on your screen. And that is shown in red, the route through the site extending from Lipan to Nettie Bacchus. And that maintains the connection between the two streets. You're probably aware that we're working on comprehensive plan amendment, which includes the master thoroughfare plan. So we're looking to propose an alternative farther south that's not been yet fully developed and be coming to you within the next few months. So we're looking at another route that would supplement this route in an east-west direction.
While you're there, let me talk a little bit about this slide too. I want y'all to notice that the Nettie Bacchus Street there is developed and paved already and Mr. Lee did that because the school couldn't do it at the time. And so in 2007, I believe, he did a public infrastructure agreement with the city. He put in the drainage structure that you saw on the previous slide and it goes to where that original master thoroughfare plan is. If you can see with that dotted line where the original master thoroughfare plan was, they actually had him build the drainage structure that direction across that area. Never talked to him about that master thoroughfare plan. And that was brought up to him the first time this year in August. So his willingness to change this road to be that thoroughfare is admirable and we need it. However, I'd like to remind everybody that those dotted lines on a unplatted piece of property are designed to be moved as needed with the development. And if you look across the highway where it's originally, where it was originally planned to be built, if you look on the colored turquoise, similar, it's not a plat yet, but it's kind of a layout. You can see that little green area there. It has the water tank there. And that master thoroughfare plan would go right where our elevated north water tank is, the water story. So they actually, when he came to develop this in 2007, told him that they didn't have the water pressure in this area of town yet. And so he gave the city an easement to allow them to build a water tower there to meet the needs for the whole part of the region. And so now then, he finds out about this thoroughfare plan and it would, you know, you'd have to move the water tower if you don't move the master thoroughfare plan. So they are designed to be moved as part of what they do and their concept. And obviously, whenever we see a large development, we want to make sure there's cross-connection. And our code requires that there's cross-connection. As you can see, to the south on that layout, that there are exit points to the subdivision on all four corners, really, on all four sides. So that's important. All right, that's all I wanted to add. I wanted to make sure that I told everybody that he put in the money to pay for that. That's how he got vested, by the way. He's invested over 5% of the infrastructure cost back in 2006 and '07 to where when he came in to develop this whole thing, he's what they call vested or had status to be able to move forward without the moratorium impacting and delaying him like it's done some other developments. So because of his previous investment, the drainage structure and that road, he's at about 8% of the infrastructure cost is invested already. So thank y'all.
There we go. So on to the change of zoning. The existing zoning has a small portion of light commercial and the remainder in various residential districts. R7, 7,000 square foot, single-family, R8.4, 8,000 square foot type, R10, 10,000 square foot, and then townhome also as a residential type. This proposal would bring to the entire property R7 single-family residential as a planned development with variances from that. So let's take a closer look at that. Excuse me. There we go. So with the R7 district, they are proposing variances that would create a development with five-foot a development with five-foot minimum each side and a ten-foot sum of side yards, whereas the current city base is five feet on one side and a total both sides of fifteen feet. The other variance that they are proposing is to the rear yard, which is a city base of thirty feet for the R seven district. They're proposing a fifteen-foot minimum rear setback. And so the changes proposed for the development standards are fairly minimal. They're also proposing to add an accommodation to increase the dwelling area. Our R seven minimum is one thousand one hundred square feet, whereas this proposal would increase that to seven, excuse me, one thousand seven hundred square foot minimum. And they're proposing also masonry on the buildings. And I've got some elevations we'll show you there. And also monotony, to minimize the number of lots that have houses of the exact same architectural style, they're proposing a monotony modification to have multiple different facades adjacent to each other rather than the same type all along in a row. This is the site plan, which you saw on the previous slide when we looked at the thoroughfare plan. It's illustrative. It shows the concept of the lot layouts, proposes where you see the green trails as well as park. There's an existing pond on the site. That's what's represented within the green area that's in the dark blue color. As Mr. Kaufman referenced, there are connections to the adjacent properties and to the abutting streets on all sides of the proposal. So that creates a good deal of connectivity. This slide shows the submitted park landscape plan. It is intentionally very high level. It just gives us an idea that there would be a proposed park, might include a softball field or baseball field, soccer area, playground, features that would be common to such a park. The note there at the top says it would be a seven-acre park. It's a proximity in size. And now we have some sample elevations that were submitted. The primary purpose of this is to show that they would be masonry elevations, brick and stone on the fronts. And most of the sides of the elevations are brick and stones. There's some that are masonry, masonry type, I should say. We have developed our proposed ordinance with the conditions. These conditions reflect the site plan layout. The, again, the site does not, or the application does not come with an engineering proposal. So the exact count of the lots may need to be adjusted, although engineering is conducted and required when you're submitting a plat application. So that will be delayed. The landscape plan showing the park as well as landscaping areas that would accompany signs at the entries of the development. And finally, the elevations as stated to allow the masonry, the monotony, and also the roof pitch, to adjust the roof pitch to a steeper pitch than what our code allows. And you can see that as in those elevations that were just displayed. We provided public notice to thirteen property owners as required and also in the Hood County News. We received nothing from those neighboring property owners in the way of appearances nor in writing. A little energy difficulty here. Our recommendation for staff is approval of the proposal, subject to conditions as contained in the staff report. And that's approval of the thoroughfare plan as well as the change of zoning. The Planning and Zoning Commission on October eighteenth recommended approval of both of the applications. The thoroughfare plan by a vote of four to one and the zoning by a vote of five to zero. And these are your voting options for the thoroughfare plan. I have another side for the zoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Let me add some more color if I could. The two thousand and six and the two thousand and seven planned development that was adopted back then allowed for a twelve feet total, which was six feet on both sides for a side yard. And so really what they're asking for is reduction of that from twelve feet to ten feet. And then the masonry is obviously going to happen. But in that previous PD, they were planning on making a different style home that would have hardy board. And it was more of a Victorian or an artisan style house. And it didn't have as much masonry on it. But so the architecture's changed. Also, they had large lots, medium-sized lots and town homes. And so what they're changing here is going, making it more uniform, all regular-sized home lots instead of the three different sizes. So those were all approved in the previous PD. And as far as lot increasing or the increasing the lots by more than ten percent, I don't think so. They're decreasing the density when it comes to where the town homes were. They were going to have a hundred and thirty-five town homes in this subdivision. And that's not what the market wants right now. And that's what they're working on, is trying to develop a lot that can be developed and sold quickly to a home builder. So things change over twenty years worth of time. And so I wanted to point that out, that they were approved for all these other issues back then. So, and we didn't really go into that because it's not really pertinent to the decision today. But when you look at what, from his perspective, there's a lot of history here. And we don't want that to go by unnoticed. So that's all I've got to add. Y'all have any questions? We'd be happy to answer them.
Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Rodriguez.
So I see we're looking at the five-yard, five-foot side yards again. So I guess I'm going to beat that dead horse anymore. But I noticed on there that the backyards are fifteen-feet backyards. Is there any possibility of maybe having those backyards a little bigger?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Jordan Bishop. I'm with Texas Surveying and Engineering. I'm a civil engineer here on behalf of Mr. Lee, the applicant. Before I answer your question, I just want to thank Mr. Kaufman and Ms. Wowie. That was probably the finest staff presentation for one of my projects that I've had to follow. The only problem I have is that you took all my talking points. So to answer your question on the fifteen-foot rear yard setback, the information we're getting from the potential builder of this development, who is also here tonight, is that the flexibility for deeper lots, you know, you saw that we're increasing the minimum size of the actual first structure. And with today's market of outdoor kitchens and all that comes with that, they like the flexibility of the deeper lots. What I can say is fifteen-foot, we are flexible on that and would be willing to bring that to twenty, if that is a real sticking point for this council. Fifteen is preferred, and so that's why we're asking for it. But if that is a major concern, I think there is some room for discussion there or adding it to the conditions of this. And if that doesn't answer it fully, have the builder come up or a follow-up question?
I have a, just to, you know, help me. I don't understand fifteen feet. Is it from the eve or the back of the house? Or is it from the kitchen, the, yeah, the outdoor kitchen?
So this fifteen, and Curia, you can correct me if I misspeak at all. But, so the rear property lines will have an invisible offset of fifteen foot that exists on the plat. And no structures are allowed to encroach upon that invisible vertical line. So it could obviously be your foundation of any structure can encroach that. In addition, any sort of roof overhang or anything like that, I believe would be interpreted as in violation of that setback if it encroached that line.
So if I could add to that, accessory buildings would be detached and those would be considered structures. I think the intent is that the house, the dwelling, would not encroach into a setback, except maybe the eve would be allowed.
What about swimming pools?
No, those are.
Great, great, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So you can put accessory buildings back there as well, but there's a setback for those five-foot from the back lot and five-foot from the side lot.
Okay.
And that's usually regulated by an HOA deed restriction or something. But our code allows an outbuilding to be installed unless there's a restriction from the HOA. So we allow pools in that fifteen-foot area. If it's a detached structure like a pergola, it can go in that area. But so what we're looking, what our interpretation of what you're wanting to build is a house footprint that's fifty-foot wide, and I guess it'd be a hundred and twenty-foot lot minus fifteen, minus the twenty in the front. So it's thirty-five. So it'd be sixty-five feet by fifty feet. And I think they're wanting a little more open space. If you look at the percentage of green space, I think that's what they're concerned about in previous cover.
Sure, sure. Okay. We were discussing this topic in case it came up. And like I said, there is some flexibility on our side with that request. If we, the footprints that this builder is expressing to us that he wants to build, he's wanting to be seventy-one feet deep. Got a twenty-yard, or twenty-foot front setback and then seventy-one. So that's about ninety-one. And roughly, we're a hundred and twenty-foot deep. So we could be, if the accessory structures, you know, if we can be assured that we can encroach with outdoor kitchens and pergolas and pavilions and things of that nature, if this is just a primary resident structure, I believe a twenty-five-foot setback, yell at me if I'm misspeaking, I believe a twenty-five-foot setback as an amended condition to our request tonight would be acceptable to us.
That does, I mean, twenty-five gets you with seventy-five foot and you're trying to have a seventy-one-foot building envelope?
That's right. Yeah. The full thirty would change a lot of these plans that are already set.
We agree with that.
Okay.
Okay. Help me again. What is the current, the current, I thought it was?
It's thirty.
It's thirty. Okay. Okay. I was thinking.
And so I've done a, I've got the information I emailed y'all today about the survey that we took. And you can see that our thirty-foot setback is the most aggressive of all our neighbors. And some are fifteen, some are ten, some are twenty, and a few are twenty-five. So that's our neighbors all around. Weatherford, Willow Park, Clever and Burson, Benbrook, Grapevine, Keller, Rockwall, Steenville, Waxahachie, Willow Park.
All of them?
Yeah.
And counsel, if I'm allowed, the builder has brought what's not in your packet and what staff hasn't received, additional booklets of some of the house elevations and footprints. I believe we have eight or ten copies. If you'd like those, I don't want to drag it out if you don't want to look. But if you'd like them, I'll come forward and pass them out. So, okay.
Great.
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Rodriguez. Go ahead.
Curia, can you put that, the development plan back up? That one's fine. So Chris, if I'm not mistaken, the one that phase one is part of this, is an extension of this project? Is that it?
That was the breakout project.
Okay. So.
And they changed the PD for F two.
So are you part of that project as well?
Yes, sir. I was the civil engineer on that project. Yes.
So the biggest thing for future land use map was that the first northern lots were going to be used as retail. And the council agreed that to change that future land use map. But the thing that, I denied that. So I'm going to just be upfront and transparent with you is that I was the only no vote on that, on that agenda item. And the reason for that is because we're looking at a loop that's five sixty-seven. And the future land use map detailed it to be retail. And the reason that the council did not vote it down is because there was no access from five sixty-seven to that specific area right there. And now you have a, an access off of five sixty-seven, a text dot access that you're going to have. And, you know, the one thing that we want to see is retail on five sixty-seven to move some of the retail out towards the outer parts of Granbury and not just on three seventy-seven. So we want to move it on some other thoroughfares and have it on five sixty-seven. So I just want to let you know where I stand. I would like to see those northern lots on both phases to be retailed so that that community right there with four hundred houses or plus would have some other place that's close by that has some type of retail or convenience stores or something where they could do that shopping and make a business. That is my, that's my, that's the only comment that I have for y'all.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. And I do remember that those previous meetings and that I would say you summarized it perfectly. I do remember those concerns you brought up then. Just a brief history, when we were working on that northeast corner, prior to bringing you the request to do away with the retail commercial area, we had a preliminary plat to the city with eight commercial lots up there. And then you are right. We ran into issues with text dot and at the request of some of your city staff, mainly the engineering department that was attempting to help us with text dot, based on those conversations, we made the decision to pull the commercial. But there was staff involvement with that decision. And now that that area of it is gone, the only remaining commercial we have up in that area has been cut in half due to that previous decision. And so that's why we're choosing now to just become uniform with the surrounding area. But I do, I understand that. And there was a time where we planned and wanted commercial up there. But things that happened have dominoed us to this point.
Mr. Wowie?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
We had this discussion last month in another development. And they asked for the same thing, going from fifteen feet total to ten feet total. And my comment was, if you knew you want to build bigger houses, houses that are sixty feet wide, let's say, why not just do a five-foot wider lot? In their case, the infrastructure's in, utilities are in, they can't change that now. This isn't platted yet. I mean, it's, you got a concept.
Correct.
But you've got this big, long row of houses on all these streets. And so my question is, if you want to build houses that are wider, why not do five-foot wider lots? And I mean, you cut out a couple lots, would it change the business plan that much to, I mean, and I got to say, there's some great things about this development. I love the park because nobody does that anymore. They just want to, you know, pay the fee in lieu of a park. And they don't have walking trails. There's no place for kids to go play. I've heard developers say, well, this is mostly for fifty-five and up. And I go, so they don't have grandkids? You know, and is it fifty-five and up? Or there're going to be younger families living there also? And the answer is anybody could live there. So, you know, there will be. So there's some things I really like about this. I had a question about the change in where the thoroughfare road is. Because on the plan, it has a red dotted line on either end of it. Well, and I talked to Mr. Kaufman yesterday and he said, you know, that road's not planned yet. So that part doesn't matter. So I'm really good with a lot of this. But again, my question is, why not just build a slightly bigger lots? Or does it really change the price point that much?
Sure. And my response to that, which, again, getting, some of these areas are not my area of expertise. You know, I'm the civil engineer. But based, what I am willing to say, and maybe one of my associates here would like to follow up with a response to that question, is that it does, it does not change the number of lots by fifty percent or sixty percent. But it's also not an insignificant change. That five feet throughout the course of a project of this volume does have a significant value to it. The other response is the sixty-foot lot with the fifty-foot home is what we're seeing the building market wanting to the building market wanting to put out to the buyer, and that's why we're here for that request.
Well, I'm gonna go, go ahead, Mr. Rodriguez.
One more question, I see that there's a screening fence, is that gonna be on the whole perimeter of the entire area here that's in turquoise?
That is, at the moment, that is proposed, location-wise, it is proposed to be around the perimeter of the subdivision where a lot would have an interior front yard on a street, obviously, and then the rear yard would back up to, say, Nettie Backus or Lipan Highway or Loop 567. And as far as what that screening wall looks like, there's all, we're doing the screening wall right now in the, in the phase, what we're calling Phase 1, but the northeast corner there that you see unhatched, and obviously, it will be the same, it will match that wall, which I believe is a wall he picked because y'all had used it on a previous city project here in town somewhere.
So what type of screening do you plan on putting on that piece of property that's a square, kind of the southwest corner where that water tank easement's at?
On the very southwest corner there?
Yeah, yeah, and that's.
It would be that screening wall.
So around that whole square area where that?
Oh, that, that internal one right there?
Right.
Where backing up? At the moment, we are not proposing that screening fence there, it would be the individual homes fences.
Okay, so that's, so how would you differentiate whether that's, so you're saying each owner of those, those lots that's backing up to that empty field will have to put their own fencing? Is that, is that what I heard you say?
It would be a lot decision, which the type and material of fence could be regulated in a deed, you know, an HOA or deed restriction, but, yeah, that would not be part of our perimeter screening fence like we were discussing along the other roadways, correct?
Do you know this is gonna be an HOA?
HOA, yes or no?
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Is there gonna be an HOA?
Oh, yes, sir.
Yes, sir, HOA.
All right, thank you.
Sorry, I just, unless I'm 100% sure, I don't want to pop off and misspeak for somebody.
So I did the calculation, I took five feet times 435 lots, and divided by 60, it's about 36 lots you'd lose, so it's about 8% of what you'd lose by having an extra five foot, so, there was a question asked, so I wanted to answer it, so.
Thank you.
Council, more questions for staff, this gentleman? I'm gonna go ahead and open the public meeting then, and I do have Mr. Haif signed up to speak at the public meeting, he'll come forward, and you guys probably don't want to go anywhere, we may have some other questions for you, thank you.
Many mayor, council persons, my name is Richard Haif, I live at 428 Riverbank Lane. As you know, I serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission, I'm the person that voted against the change of the thoroughfare plan, and that was based on the information I had at the time. There were two reasons for it, one was I was concerned about intersection misalignment, which we've talked about even previously this evening, and Kira Wowie has already said that she's working with the consultants on addressing that, so that's a dead issue. The other concern I have is through traffic through a subdivision. It's not a, not something that we would prefer, it's something that the city's subdivision ordinance discourages, but on the flip side, we really need this, this through road to give a second access to Nettie Backus Elementary. As I'm sure you're all aware, traffic gets pretty congested when all the parents show up to pick up their children or drop them off at the school, so a second access would be very nice, but that traffic through the subdivision could have a negative impact on the residents of the subdivision. A solution for that is to make, cause people to slow down as they drive through the subdivision. They have this beautiful park they're planning, I'd hate to have the residents complain that people are zooming by the park in their, in their hurry to get their children to or from the school. The solution I would propose is a traffic calming device, the one that you, most often comes to mind is speed humps, which of course, everybody hates, so I'm not proposing that by any stretch of the imagination. I think of a traffic circle on each side of the park or a chicane, which just shifts the traffic for a, for a short period of time, can be built in the same footprint on the road for minimal cost, but make the residents a lot happier. So having had more time to look into this since the Planning and Zoning Commission, I'd urge you to approve the thoroughfare plan change, but request that the developer work with our staff to come up with the best way to put traffic calming to make sure that everyone wins out of this, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haif. Questions, council? I, I think for staff, it wouldn't be on our plan here, but knowing the problems that we have with the schools and the parents lining up, do we have, is it, would the traffic accumulation be on some of these streets next to it, or is, are there, is there adequate roundabouts at the school, do we know?
So, I'm, I'm, haven't studied the traffic for the Nettie Backus routing for their drop-off, however, I understand they, they route down Nettie Backus south from Loop 567, then into the property and queue up on, on the property, on the school.
I'm probably out, you know, I'm probably out of school saying that we should be doing this looking here, but then we'll get with schools to determine as we go forward. Other questions?
Mayor, if I could, I'd comment on that a little bit. The school was working on doing improvements to relieve the public road system of their school drop-off and pickup time in the previous two bond issues, and so I'm sure that when we get a new superintendent, there's gonna be something else discovered, and, but I would imagine those conversations are gonna come up again with them, but also, this neighborhood hopefully will have kids walking to school from there, and there'll be sidewalks for safety and what have you, so I think the calming idea is a great suggestion, in fact, they talked about it at the P&amp;Z meeting that I attended with them, so that would be, that would be something that they would take care of during the plan review for the preliminary plat. But I, I think they're hearing you tonight loud and clear that you're concerned about the speed and the, it's gonna be kind of like Saratoga, it's ultimately gonna reach Highway 4 if we can get that other developer on board, and that's gonna have the similar situation, so. It's a thoroughfare, and that's what happens, it's just like Water's Edge or Harbor Lakes Drive, people are gonna drive down that road to get to their house, and it's not uncommon, what you're looking at there, for houses to have a driveway that backs up to that busy street, just like you do on, on those two roads that are in our premier subdivision, so, I see this as a great project, and I hope, hope that y'all will take some action, but I would, I would worry about that access on the preliminary plat review that you're gonna have in the future.
Okay, thank you. Other questions, any, any other comments? Yes, sir. Yes, please.
I'm Wayne Lee, developer. Is it, can you hear me now?
Oh, yeah.
I live at 1601 Regal Oaks Drive in South Lake. Some of the questions, I'm sorry, I'm getting hard of hearing, so, but a couple of things that I wanted to just point out, the, in response to the gentleman over here, it's very easy to put a stop, stop signs, probably down there about where the park is, to stop that traffic from, from just zipping through, that's easy. We're not, we're not even close to a final plat, and those, these are items that come out of that final plat, we're here to talk, to really talk about zoning and, and merely changing the, the transportation plan, I want to, I want to address that. I don't know how much you know about the history of this, but when I bought this property in 2004, I came to the city, of course, there was no, there was no long-range transportation plan at all, I met with the city manager, Harold Sandell, the director of public works, Scott Sobchak, and they asked me to consider putting a road all the way through from Lipan all the way down to Backus Road, because they, they felt like that was, you know, which basically is, is what's on the plan now, except it's about 300 or 400, maybe 300 yards difference in, in location. Now, they also wanted me to see if I would work with the county and the school and solve the drainage problem that was existing. The city manager, I think, explained that, but we, we actually built and constructed a, it's, it's an open drainage, but it goes right along that, that boundary, so it'd be impossible to put a road on top of a drainage easement, and if you, if you did go down there and build a road there, it would be a road to nowhere, because our property line stops where that big notch is, and so we don't, we, so it would be a road that would be, maybe be a 900-foot long, it would be a road to nowhere. So, you know, our, our planning, we, we weren't using the word thoroughfare, we were using, at that time, we would, we called it a collector, that, we brought many, many documents and showed to some of the city staff the other day, but that, that was done at, at the request of the city, which was a good plan, because since you didn't have a thoroughfare plan, we were, here we are, we're willing to put a, a road all the way through at, at our expense, it, when we build it, it's gonna be about a $4 million cost, if you, if you try to put, do away with the thoroughfare plan and, and build it somewhere else, you'd never know if the state's ever gonna kick in money, I noticed in, in the paper just this week, where y'all are, y'all are gonna be calling the people down there at TexDOT and, and at the state legislature, begging for money for, for this transportation plan. Well, you, here you get one free. Now, this, and the third thing is, you might notice, we planned it all along to where we restricted very, as, as much as we could, the amount of, of homes that'll even open up on that, so from a safety standpoint, I think we have something like 18 homes out of, out of about 497, I mean, so we, we planned it better than any other transportation plan, in fact, y'all, y'all's transportation plan now doesn't restrict driveways, but on our own, we, we thought, let's be sure to restrict those, because as people back out, we don't want, where there's a lot of traffic back into them, so, I'm just telling you, we've, we've spent a lot of time, a lot of years, a lot of planning and a lot of dollars, trying to do what I think you would do in the same circumstance, you might not lay out $6 million to do it, but, but I have.
Well, and don't, I, please don't think for a minute that you're not, and your company here is not appreciative, you certainly are, we're just asking these questions so that we can go through the process here to make sure that we understand, and that you get to hear some of the concerns that we will hear on an ongoing basis, and some of the applause, because this is a nice addition to this part of town that we've been looking for, so, don't think for a minute that this is not appreci, we're not appreciative, we certainly are of your patience and your perseverance for 20 years, thank you.
If I could, I know I'm out of my three minutes, but if I could just talk about the, the side yard setbacks.
Okay.
We, we, we don't have to have that extra foot on each side that we have now, the builder, Darryl Horton Homes, they, they, their plans typically are laid out, and matter of fact, they showed you in either 40, 45, 50-foot widths, and so, 10-foot, a total of 10, just like in Sandstone, just like in about 80% of your other subdivisions that exist, or have a total of 10-foot, we're allowed for 12, if, if you really hung over that two-foot, make a motion, I'm, but we think, we, we, what we're trying to do is, is give you a much more upscale product that, that'll still be where we can, where the homes can be sold at a somewhat reasonable price. The, Darryl Horton Homes, the largest home builder in America, they, they run numbers pretty, pretty tight, and they know what the magic number is, and right now, it's about 320 to 370,000. When you start adding, you wouldn't, you wouldn't think it would make a whole lot of difference, but if you, let's just say you add five-foot to, to a, the width of a lot, at $1,500 a foot, that's $7,500, and then you typically multiply that times five, that's just a rule of the industry, because you, you, your lot costs typically, if it exceeds 20% of the sales price, the profit margins go, get out of whack, is that not the case? And so, again, if that two-foot is, is a hang-up, we, I'm fine, and likewise, on the back, if, if, if you would allow us to, to, to have a 20-foot rear yard, every home you've got there is about 71 to 75-foot deep. It shows 71, but if you put any kind of a, an awning or whatever, it could very easily make those 75, so you have a 20-foot at the front, 75, that's 95, and that just leaves 25 at the back, and, and 20, if you're gonna be, you know, like we talked about, if you're gonna, somebody wants to put a kitchen or whatever, and, and by the way, most of those homes won't be that deep, but, you know, we, we can't pick and choose, we know that that'll be the maximum depth of, of any home that would, that would, that would go in there, would be 71-foot. I may have, I may have given you too much information, but if you have any questions, feel free to ask me.
Let me assure you that you've worked with us for 20 years, you've worked with us for 20 years, I feel very comfortable giving you the extra three minutes, four minutes, whatever it is, thank you. Mr. Rodriguez may have a question for you.
Mayor, thank you very much. Wayne, yeah, I'll echo what the mayor said, we really appreciate you developing this area. The, the one question I had, and I'm, and I asked your civil engineer the same, but was your intention was to have any type of retail on the northern parts of those lots, or tell me, tell me what the history behind that is?
Those were planned to be professional office lots, and if you look at the preliminary plat that exists today from 2006, that was when Avery Road was just, it was just Avery Road, and so, all eight of those lots, I believe there was eight, were just gonna have a driveway out on, where you're just able to pull in, and that, well, obviously, when TexDOT got involved, that changes, and I understand that, I've worked with TexDOT on many, many occasions, but it created a problem because, you know, you wouldn't want eight cars backing into, especially into a turn lane, which is a school zone, and so, staff really didn't want us doing it that way, and they, they, we were about ready to break ground on, you know, and we basically had to tear all those plans up, and that's, that's what's cost us another three years, that was in 2021. Now, I want, keep in mind that there's 60 acres that butts right up against us, it presently owned, it belongs to Tri-County Electric, and they're gonna put a, a transfer station, but they're only gonna use 10 acres of that, so you could easily put, put it on your master plan, that, however, whatever depth, all the way from there, all the way down to the corner, you know, where the Garcia's at that opposite corner, make that retail, it'd be a great spot for it, you put all the retail together, and, you know, keep in mind that the market, the market determines retail, though, you know, you gotta have house stops before people want to put retail in.
Yes, sir.
But that, that vacant land is right there, it ought to be easy to, for whoever develops that, you would just upfront say, "We would like to have, start at the corner and, and, and put retail."
Do you own that vacant land as well, is that what you're saying?
Tri-County.
Tri-County, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Lee, thank you very much. Thank you for the history.
And thank y'all for, for your consideration, and thank you for serving today as a, as a most important day in the life of this country, and I thank you for being here and serving your duty here, and pray for the nation tonight, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, other questions, see if there's one else? I'm gonna go ahead and close this public hearing, and if I could ask that the motions be put up on the screen again? Do you have those, or just, Carl? Okay, so we have a motion, this is 24.64, is to approve the request to amend the thoroughfare plan contained within the 2016 comprehensive plan, correct?
Still moved.
Second.
So that is the correct motion, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I have a, then I have a, I have a. Okay, I have a, then I have a, I have a motion and I have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That will pass 6-0. That's for 2464. And 2465, that one is, if you can bring that up. This is to change the zoning from light commercial plan development R7, single-family residential, R8.4, single-family residential, R10, single-family residential and townhome, to plan development R7, single-family residential, subject to the conditions in the proposed ordinance. And can you just summarize those? Care, what are those conditions?
Sure. So this is zone change. We have the variances for PDR7 standards. I'll just summarize the variances for you. Side yard of 5 feet minimum each side, 10 feet in sum total. And we have rear yard 15-foot minimum. And we have the additional standards increase of dwelling area being 1,700 square feet. Then the development plan drawings were the elevations, similar in appearances attached to the elevation exhibit. Those were the slides I showed, the elevations. Masonry consisting of 70% of the total outside wall area to be masonry, brickstone, brick veneer or stone veneer. One elevation per each floor plan may have 20% stone on the front elevation. The monotony consideration, the same elevation must not be used within any six-slot grouping as defined by one adjacent on either side and the three lights immediately across from those same lots. Roof pitch, 90% of the homes have a front elevation, minimum 812 roof pitch, site plan conditions. The site plan label sheet, one of three of the exhibits, the site plan depicts the variance table. That table is per the written conditions. And plat and civil engineering concepts have not been submitted, so the final site layout with the PD may be changed. The landscape plan is shown on sheet three. Landscaping provided in areas indicated for landscaping shown on that plan. 6-foot-high decorative fence to be installed with development as shown on that plan. Park area developed with improvements as stated and depicted on the landscape plan. And finally, site signage shall not be placed on individual residential lot, the sign plan as shown on the landscape plan. Final lotting plan may be required adjustments to accommodate signage. Those were the proposed conditions.
Mayor, can she repeat? I'm sorry. Now, just one, the rear yard setback, can we, can you repeat that one? Because I know we had, you said 15, is that correct?
15 is within it right now.
And the developer and the architect said that 20 or 25 is sufficient? Is that correct?
20.
20 would be what they're flexible with. Yeah, 20 is acceptable.
Okay. Thank you very much.
If it would make things easier, I would suggest that you make a motion to approve the ordinance as presented with the change to allow for a 20-foot rear setback instead of a 15. And that would cover all the wording that you just heard and make it easier for Carolyn.
And we would be fine with that.
Okay, thank you.
That, so that provides you guys a path to continue on here, what we're proposing.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So if you will verbalize that just one more time?
I would suggest that you make a motion to approve the ordinance. What's the number?
2465.
2465, as presented with the exception to change the rear yard setback from 15 feet to 20 feet.
Can I make that motion?
Second.
That's why I enjoy working here. Good. The motion has been made. Motion's been seconded, that we will change, make that exception to make that 20, 20 feet versus 15 feet, okay, in the rear yard. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays, so that is passing 6-0. Thank you, Mr. Lee. We certainly appreciate your patience.
All right, thank you.
All right. We'll move now to 7.2, another public hearing. Consider adopting ordinance number 2466, approving the request of Britt Phillips petition for voluntary annexation of approximately 7-point acres in the WG Terrell Survey Abstract Number 562. It's located at 4172 U.S. Highway 377, East U.S. Highway 377. Mr. Coffin?
Mayor, I may be able to save us some time tonight without needing to turn this over to Ms. Wally. In May, we adopted a development agreement with Mr. Phillips to do this exact same thing. And so this is just carrying out the administrative process to annex that property. That development agreement also provides him water and sewer capacity once it's available. Y'all have any questions? If you need to, I'll care to go through the whole thing, but that's a summary in a nutshell.
Anyone have questions? No. Public hearing, I will open it up to the public. Anyone want to speak? See no one standing? No hands? Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing. I hear a motion to adopt ordinance number 2466, approving the request of Britt Phillips petition for voluntary annexation of approximately 7.8 acres in the WG Terrell Survey Abstract Number 562, located 4172 East U.S. Highway 377.
Mayor, make a motion to approve ordinance 2466, just stated.
Motion's made.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Widdley. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. It is approved 6-0. Okay. 7.3, we will consider approving the purchase of the Granberry Raw Water Pump for the amount of $140,000 from Pump Solutions utilizing the inter-local purchasing system, contract number 23010401. And we will consider adopting ordinance number 2467, amending the operating budget for the utility fund. So, Mr. Coffin, discussion?
We can dive into this real deep if you want and have staff come talk, but due to the time tonight, I thought maybe I could just answer your questions. Most of us have talked about this agenda item. It is a submersible pump that goes at the water treatment plant. It would be a pump that would increase our pump capacity from 3 to 4 on inventory. Right now, we are waiting on a pump to be returned, to be able to be installed. And in the future, if we had this extra pump, we'd be able to pull the bad pump, put a new pump back in, keep operating at capacity without worries of failure, and be able to send that other one off, get fixed, bring back, put on the shelf and be ready to go again. That's in a nutshell what we're trying to do here. These pumps are very expensive and they are the ones that feed the DeSau plant.
So Chris, how many pumps we have on hand now?
We have three pumps that function and two of them are down.
Oh, holy cow.
And it takes about 14 weeks to get it rebuilt and back to us. And so this is...
Yeah, I saw the Lee time on that.
This is, this is probably a solution that we would have never dreamed that we needed to have had we not had two pumps go down within three months of each other. And it costs $45,000 for that charge with the lift and everything to come and the scuba divers to go in and retrieve and pull that heavy pump out. And then if we had another pump, we could install it while we're there for a little more cost probably, but we don't have that fixed cost. Now we're going to have to do it all over again. So the process to maintain these pumps is eye-opening. And so we're addressing it to be more efficient moving forward. It's a pretty big check, $140,000, but it saves us tens of thousands of dollars moving forward.
Other comments? Other questions? Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the purchase of the Granberry Raw Water Pump for the amount of $140,000 from the Pump Solutions, Inc., utilizing the inter-local purchasing system, contract number 23010401, and adopting ordinance number 2467, which amending the operating budget for the utility fund?
Still moved. Second.
Mr. Corrigan makes the motion. Mr. Orbidere, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays, that approves 6-0. Go to 7.4, it too is a public hearing. Consider adopting ordinance number 24-68, approving the request of Thomas Bennett for a specific use permit to allow for construction equipment, rental use and light commercial zoning. The property is located at 4640 East Highway 377. Mr. Coffin?
I'll turn this one over to our community development director, Carol Wally.
Thank you, sir. So this is our site location map. The site is outlined in teal. It is on the north side of Highway 377. The adjacent property to the east is an automobile repair facility. To the north is undeveloped and to the south are some offices, personal care business. And to the, I'm sorry, to the south is auto dealership and to the west is personal care offices, retail types of uses. The site is about one acre in sizes and was formerly used for automobile sales and then that use has been gone for some time. This is your zoning map. This is, the pink shows the light commercial. The surrounding zoning is heavy commercial and represented by uses that are heavier in nature with outdoor types and characteristics, especially the automobile dealership to the south, which also has lighter equipment and implement sales in association with its automobile dealers. This is the site plan for the property. It shows the existing buildings and improvements on the site. The bottom edge of the site plan on your screen is the Highway 377. Those arrows represent access to and from the property. And the orange boxes there next to the arrows, that's where the heavy equipment would be located. The blue lines above those orange boxes are the parking that would be provided on the site and then towards the back are the existing improvements. I have a little problem with the clicker. So the site is compatible to the surrounding area and we've offered conditions that the site be limited to a one-year timeframe. The use has not been on the property before and we don't have any performance history. The specific use permit is for the rental sales of construction equipment. We tie this to the Exhibit A, the site plan. Parking and maneuvering display and storage must be on an improved surface. And the other two are standard conditions that the specific use permit comply with the city code and is subject to periodic inspections. The criteria to examine this particular use as a SUP includes whether the use is harmonious and compatible with the surrounding and existing uses. It appears to be. Are the activities requested associated with requested use? The answer is yes. Is the nature of the use reasonable? The use appears to be reasonable in context with the site size and nature of surrounding area. Has the impact on the surrounding area been mitigated? It appears that there wouldn't be any impacts on the surrounding area. And there are also regulations which we have in our zoning ordinance, Section 111B. The site is zoned LC and is located on 377. That is a major highway where we would expect higher intensity uses to locate. The planning, excuse me, this would be the planning zoning recommendation reviews whether the site is developed and what is improved for. And the site is developed and is in order for this site. It's prepared for this kind of use. The granting of an SUP, the city council may impose conditions which were already reviewed and the applicant should be willing to accept and agree to those conditions. These are standards of the permitting and use of the site under the grant of a SUP. We provided mailed-out notices. There were four property owners within 200 feet. We also notified the proposal through the newspaper. We didn't receive any input from anyone in favor nor in opposition. We have these conditions, which I had previously stated. Staff's recommended approval. And the Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended approval, subject to staff's recommended conditions. And these are your voting options. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Council have questions for Ms. Wally?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Orbidere.
Just a quick question. It looks like there's like five parking spots. Is that for the customers or where are the employees going to park and where's?
So based on...
Please come up.
Sorry.
Just introduce yourself and let us know where you're from.
Hello, my name's Tyler Bennett. I live in Big Rodova, 4516, somewhere on the trail. So the five parking spots that you see on there are going to be for the customers. Employee parking will be, there's, if you can see there, there's a shop in the back. So we'll have all parking in the shop and the surrounding areas of the shop. There's plenty of space for that. But that's all for all of the retail customers.
So there's no requirement to have X number of parking spots?
So the zoning ordinance does require parking and based on evaluation of the proposed site plan, there is adequate parking on the site.
Very good. Other questions? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay. Any other questions? Do I hear a motion to approve the SUP as presented?
Still moved.
I hear a motion.
Second.
And I hear a second from Mr. Vale. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Hear no nays, it's approved 6-0. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bennett. We appreciate it.
Can I say something?
Mr. Coffin?
Mr. Bennett, I just want to thank you for going through this process. I know it's very painful and renewing's not going to be that hard, okay? So welcome to Granberry. We appreciate you investing your business in our community and expanding here. Look forward to supporting you any way we can.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, I did close the public hearing. I think our video will prove that. If I didn't, I'm confident I did, but if I didn't. We do close that public hearing on 7.4. Yeah. Oh, no, that, okay. No, you guys are right. Again, I hate this. Yes, I closed the public hearing on 7.4 and then we vote. Okay. All right. We now have 7.5, consider making an appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission to fill a vacant seat. We had a vacancy come open. We have three candidates, Mr. Jerry Allen and Mr. Leedy Daniels and Mr. Alexander Alex Wolf. This is one of those where planning and zoning, as you've heard all night tonight, it's, there's a lot of bread and butter there and there's a lot of work that has to be done to keep the city moving in the direction that, you know, that we all hope and want. We have three excellent candidates. This is a, this is a tough job, I would say. Mr. Haves, you are part of that planning and zoning committee, so I know that it's not sit and sip. This is real work. So does anyone have questions or any comments? I see Mr. Haves, or Mr. Wolf is in the audience. Mr. West or Mr. Daniels here? No?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Orbidere.
Mr. Mayor, I've looked over all the applications and I know Alex Wolf, he was a candidate for city council last year. I've gotten to know him. His family and he are involved in our community. He's volunteered for several other boards and commissions here in Granberry, and I'd like to nominate him for that open position on the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Vale?
As you know, I've had the opportunity to serve on PNZ before being elected to city council. I served on there three years and some of that time with Mr. Haves. I'd like to nominate Jerry Allen. Jerry Allen is a 26-year veteran, or I'm sorry. Jerry Allen is a twenty-six-year veteran or, I'm sorry, citizen of Granbury. Jerry worked eight years at our conference center here in Granbury. Uh, he worked ten years at the G I S D. Uh, he's a local realtor. He's a past president of the Granbury Association of Realtors. He's a local musician, uh, so he performs around town. So he's involved in our community. He understands, you know, our community. That's what he put on his application for PNZ. Uh, I know Jerry and I think Jerry is very well qualified to serve on our planning and zoning commission.
Well, I'm gonna just make sure that Mr. Daniels' credit, credentials are recognized. He has been president of our boarding, or planning and zoning for something like twenty-five or thirty years at one time. As he is a long, longtime advocate for the city and like I say, we have three exceptionally qualified people here today. But I heard a nomination for Mr. Oberdear, Mr. Vale, or for, uh, Mr. Wolf. Mr. Vale, did you nominate Mr. West?
Mr. Allen, Jerry Allen.
I mean, Mr. Allen, yes. So we have, uh, those two nominations. Any other nominations, Mr. Rodriguez?
Uh, yeah, Mayor, um, I just want to say, uh, Mr. Daniels have extensive experience in, in the, the different commission boards that we, we have and, and you have pointed out, you know, uh, Mr. Daniels has the most experience in planning and zoning than any of the other two candidates. Not to say that we don't, uh, think that the other two candidates aren't, uh, uh, good candidates to, to do this, but, uh, if we're going by experience on this, I know Mr. Daniels doesn't have a resume in there and hasn't filled out, but, um, he's served on the planning and zoning commission when I served on that one.
So is that a nomination?
Uh, yes, Mayor, I nominate, uh, just to make it more confusing and more competitive.
So now I can turn it to our attorney.
I, I, I just want to make it just more confusing.
Everyone gets one vote because we're only filling in one spot.
Okay, you have one vote. Can't vote for, can't vote for Wolf and Allen. You got one vote, you gotta choose.
You have a nomination down here for Daniels.
Or Daniels, right, you gotta choose. All right, everybody here?
You got it again.
Yeah.
You get one vote.
You get one vote, you can't vote for all three one time. You get one vote of the three.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
This may be the hardest night, the hardest part of the night. All right. All right. In the order that they were nominated, all in favor of Mr. Wolf, say, raise your hand. We have two.
Two.
Okay, can't vote. All in favor of Mr. Allen, raise your hand. We have two. Oh, yeah. All in favor of Mr. Daniels, raise your hand. We have two. Now what do we do?
Can I maybe narrow this down just a little bit?
Alphabetically?
No.
Just, ju- just briefly, um, I don't, I don't know Mr. Wolf, but, um, it was brought to my attention today, uh, by the city secretary that he does sit on our ZBA. And I want to bring that to your attention because although the, the statute, the state statutes allow for a home rule city such as the city of Granbury to incorporate their own policies and ordinances for boards, and you have, um, there's not a limitation of setting on planning and zoning and ZBA, but what, what I would ask that you be coherent of is, uh, in fact, an issue today that we are going to take to ZBA stemmed out of planning and zoning and so while not illegal, there is an inherent conflict that possibly could come up by someone sitting on planning and zoning, making a decision on something and then being on the zoning board of adjustment, hearing that later. So I just want you to consider that as well.
Who's on ZBA?
Mr. Wolf is here.
Yeah.
Does that ex, so that doesn't exclude him, but.
It doesn't exclude him, but something you might want to be aware of.
It is a potential conflict that, yes, makes it fair. Okay. We're gonna, with that piece of information, do, we will vote again. Okay, we'll do it in the same order. All in favor of Mr. Wolf? We have one. All in favor of Mr. Allen? We have two. And all in favor of Mr. Daniel? We have three. Okay. Thank you for your input, council.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Allen?
And Mr. Wolf, I just want to address you, um, personally, I, I think you're doing a wonderful job on ZBA and I, and I hope that if we have another opening on, um, planning and zoning, that you continue to make the efforts and continue to be resilient and continue to apply for those positions. We, uh, we value your contribution to these commissions and our commission boards. Uh, so thank you for the service that you have by, have provided so far. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Number seven six, consider approving an interlocal agreement between the city of Granbury and Hood County for Hood County to provide twenty-five thousand improvements.
We need to go ahead and vote on Mr. Daniels and.
Oh, we didn't vote on Mr. Dan.
Yeah, we just.
Okay, Mr. Daniels is three and oh, so Mr. Daniel is the new appointee to.
No. Just helping her.
Okay. We work together up here. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So seven point six, consider approving an interlocal agreement between the city of Granbury and Hood County for Hood County to provide twenty-five thousand dollars improvements at the Granbury Fire Training Center in exchange for the city allowing access to the training center by the Hood County Volunteer Fire Departments over a three-year period. Mr. Kaufman.
This is a, uh, almost a consent item, but I'll let Michael Ross take over. Uh, this is something he's in charge of with the fire department. Thank you, Michael. Deputy City Manager.
Thank you, Chris, City Council. I'll be brief. The Hood County Fire Marshal and Fire Chief and myself have been working on the attached interlocal agreement. The agreement has the county providing twenty-five thousand dollars to the city for improvements to the Granbury Fire Training Ground in exchange for allowing the other eight, the Hood County Volunteer Fire Departments to utilize our fire training ground over the next three years. Some of the departments historically have already been doing that infrequently. Is that not loud enough?
There you go.
Okay. Other departments, they've been doing that infrequently over time, but, uh, this would formalize that process, would set specific times each month. We, a schedule would be developed and our fire department would supervise any, uh, training that goes on at the fire grounds. This, uh, the proposed improvements are related to the roof, the ceiling, other structural improvements along with power washing and painting. Uh, the city will handle the procurement under our policies and will oversee the work. Excuse me. Staff recommends city council approve an interlocal agreement between the city of Granbury and Hood County for Hood County to provide twenty-five thousand in improvements at the Granbury Fire Training Center in exchange for the city allowing access to the training center by the other Hood County Volunteer Fire Departments over that three-year period. Happy to answer any questions.
No questions? Okay. Did an admirable job there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the interlocal agreement between the city of Granbury and Hood County for Hood County to provide twenty-five thousand improvements at the Granbury Fire Training Center in exchange for the city allowing access to the training center by the Hood County Volunteer Fire Departments over a three-year period? Mr. Corgan?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Vale makes a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays, it's passed six and oh.
Mayor.
I just got one thing. I, I'd like to hear Greg Corgan and his, I mean, he's on the fire, uh, fire department and I, I just would like to hear his take on this and how it affects him on his, from his perspective and how, how it's such a good deal for the, for the city to be involved in this. Could you, can you enlighten us there, Greg?
Sure. I mean, Michael pretty much covered it. The Granbury Fire Department works in conjunction with all of the Hood County Fire Departments to provide, uh, training for, uh, the entire county so that when we're on scene, we all understand what we're doing. Um, other departments infrequently, as was said, have utilized the, the training facility, which just adds to, um, how quickly things get, um, to a point where they're no longer useful, like the roof. Uh, you can only burn, you know, so many times before it's no longer functional. Uh, so by the, the county providing the funds to, to fix these things for, um, just continued access to those training grounds is beneficial for everybody involved.
Yeah. I, I would have to agree when you, uh, talk about the Granbury City Fire Department or the Granbury Fire Department, Volunteer Fire Department, you talk about the entire group. I mean, cause you don't see, if something happens here on our square, you see everybody showing up, so.
Mayor, I just want to add that this was, um, presented by the fire, Fire Chief, the city Fire Chief and it's in, you know, it's a collaboration between the Fire Chief, Fire Marshal, between the county and the city, working together, uh, for a common cause and for a common effort of, uh, making sure that every fireman is, is developed and trained in the same aspect as everybody else. That way, everybody can expect the same type of, uh, you know, whatever, when they're on scene, they, they know what they're gonna do. So this is awesome, continuity, uh, and the same type of training across the board. And, uh, this is a kudos on the county for participating and helping financially on this, on this.
Thank you. And that motion has passed six and oh. Seven point seven, considering approving resolution number twenty-four dash one-two authorizing selection of Grant Works, Inc. to provide project-related administrative services for EDA disaster twenty-twenty-three program in the amount of one-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand-seven-hundred.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, council. This, these next two items are the same project and this is at the airport and I'll turn it over to Deputy City Manager, Michael Ross, to explain what's going on there.
Sorry, Carla. I was trying to get to the, to the picture. She was looking at Kara. Uh, thank you, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. Council may recall authorizing staff to advertise for the ninety-ten EDA grant administrator to assist the city with the grant process associated with the design and construction of the proposed Granbury Regional Airport Perimeter Road. The city opened proposals on October seventh and Grant Works was the sole provider of a proposal for that work. The staff team evaluated Grant Works and recommends approval. Grant Works also assisted the city through the pre-application process at no charge, so it is fitting that they are our selection. Grant Works has extensive experience in providing local government entities with comprehensive grant management services. The proposed cost of services from Grant Works is one-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand dollars, seven, one-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand-seven-hundred dollars, which is six percent of the grant amount and is customary. Staff recommends city council approve resolution number twenty-four dash twelve authorizing the selection of Grant Works, Inc. to provide project-related administrative services for EDA disaster twenty-twenty-three program in the amount of one-sixteen-seven-hundred. And I'd like to show you that exhibit if I can get it. Phase one, uh, work is the red at the bottom. That is about twenty-eight-hundred linear feet of twenty-four-foot wide asphalt, uh, open, open ditch, swales on each side to drain. Uh, phase two, you'll see is, is also included here. That is the purple-colored segment that actually gets us out to Howard Clemens. And so the red begins over at our, at our FBO and then the purple phase two takes it all the way out. And so that's the, phase one is what this EDA grant is for. And that was the amount you approved through a budget amendment to, to fund the entire project. We have to front that money and then ninety percent of that is reimbursable to us as we proceed. I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have.
I might just add that, um, it's a million and a half dollar grant. When we did the estimate for construction before we submitted, uh, all this would come in within budget based on what we're dealing with tonight. So, um, I think construction costs are gonna be higher than what they were two years ago when we applied for this grant, but, uh, we, we've got to start somewhere and we've got to get rolling down the road, but, uh, it's, so far it's going as planned and, but I do expect the, the construction to be more at some point.
Okay. Other questions from Mr. Ross? Any other questions? No? Do I hear a motion to approve resolution number twenty-four twelve authorizing the selection of Grant Works, Inc. to provide project-related administrative services for EDA disaster twenty-twenty-three program in the amount of one-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand-seven-hundred?
So moved.
Mr. Woodley?
Second.
And seconded by Mr. Oberdear. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays, that will pass six and oh. And as part of this, uh, same project, consider adopting resolution number twenty-four dash one-three authorizing selection of Westwood Professional Services to provide project-related engineering slash environmental services for EDA disaster twenty-twenty-three program and authorize city manager to negotiate a contract in an amount not to exceed three-hundred-thousand dollars. Mr. Kaufman.
I'll turn it over to Mr. Ross.
Thank you, Chris, City Council. You may also recall authorizing staff to advertise for this, uh, engineering firm services and engineering and construction services associated with the same regional airport perimeter road. The city opened those statements of qualifications on September seventh and Westwood Professional Services was the sole provider of a statement of qualifications. Thank God we got one and, and they are a good one. The staff team evaluated Westwood and recommends them for approval. Staff requested a, a cost proposal from Westwood for the proposed phase one scope of engineering services and we requested an alternate phase two price for those services as well if we, the city desires. The phase one cost proposal from Westwood is two-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand-four-hundred, including all engineering survey and geotechnical work. The same phase two work, uh, if we choo- choose to proceed with that would be sixty-three-thousand-one-hundred for a total of two-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand-five-hundred. Staff recommends that the phase two services be considered even though it would be at a hundred percent cost to the city for phase two. There are cost-saving opportunities by including both phases in the engineering economy of scale and the construction phase of the work as well, assuming funding is available. Staff recommends council adopt resolution twenty-four thirteen authorizing the selection of Westwood Professional Services to provide project-related engineering environmental services for the EDA disaster twenty-twenty-three program and authorize the city manager to negotiate a contract in an amount not to exceed three-hundred-thousand. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Okay. Explain a little bit more, uh, for my identification on the, uh, uh, phase one, phase two. The three-hundred-thousand dollars, does that get us the, uh, if, you know, if we have a good negotiator, should there be a good negotiator? Well, we'd be able to, uh, get phase two in that same, uh, three, in the, in the three-hundred-thousand.
Yes, sir. The, the phase two engineering services, if he, if we can authorize up to three-hundred-thousand would get us both. Um, our goal would be to maybe lessen that sum, but that would be the maximum that, no more than three-hundred-thousand, to do both phase one and phase two, which would get us connected to Howard Clemens and would get us connected to the FBO.
It would get us the engineering study. We still have to find funds to do the actual construction of phase two.
Yes, sir. Hundred percent would be on us for phase two. Yes, sir.
Unless we can find another grant.
Right.
And Grant Works is here tonight. Rob Berthin is here with Grant Works if we, and he's a, he's got ideas.
Good.
I think we have a gentleman from Westwood here. I'm not sure. Yes, sir.
Yeah. Great.
I would, I would just, uh, let you know that, uh, West, Westwood bought out Pacheco Engineering, which is a big Texas firm. Westwood's nationwide, they've got a big presence and, uh, y'all all know Holly Moore over in Roanoke, Air Pro Tim. She is the, um, one of the, uh, salespeople, I guess what you'd call her, for the firm. And so I was extremely glad that we were able to at least get one proposal. I mean, we advertise this with engineering firms and nobody applied and, uh, except Holly because she's been working on me. She serves on the Texas Municipal League Intergovernmental. She serves on the Texas Municipal League Intergovernment Risk Pool with me and she's been wanting some of our business and they've been over and talked to us in the past and asked and solicited for our business. So, when they saw that we were looking, they submitted an RFQ and we're certainly happy to have them in our scope of work now, I hope.
Right. Well, do I hear a motion to authorize or to approve Resolution Number 24-13 authorizing the selection of Westwood Professional Services to provide project-related engineering slash environmental services for EDA Disaster 2023 program and authorize the City Manager to negotiate a contract in an amount not to exceed $300,000?
So moved.
Mr. Corgan makes a motion?
Second.
Mr. Rodriguez seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear none nays. That will pass 6-0. Before we move to the next thing, gentlemen, I want to just point out to everyone that this too is a working group and tonight with the developments that are coming on board, with the new retail businesses that are moving into town, with the airport continuing to expand, we invested almost a million dollars tonight in our city and I think that's exactly what our citizens have been asking us to do, is to invest in the city to get the returns that we continue to get. So, thank you. I think this is all due to you and your staff, Mr. Kaufman, so thank you so much.
Well, and also, it's important to note that approximately $300,000 of that million are grant funds.
Yeah.
So, it's really good. So, it's exciting to see grant funds come to our community and we've got more coming, so.
You heard it here first. Okay. All right. Let's move to number eight. Citizen comments on matters not on the agenda. Ms. Walker? We have no one that signed up for that, so we will pass on number eight. We will now go into executive session where we discuss matters permitted by the following sections of the Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. We have 551071, consultation with attorney pending or contemplated litigation, 551072, deliberation regarding real property, and 551087, deliberation regarding a economic development negotiation. So, we are now in executive session. I now declare that the Granbury City Council reconvenes into open session. There was no action taken in closed session and all council members are present. Is there any out, council? Do we have any?
Mr. Mayor? Yes, I'd like to move to ratify the moratorium development agreement with Westbluff LLC.
Second.
I have a motion, have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear none nays. That passes 6-0.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Vale?
Make a motion to authorize the City Manager to execute a development agreement with Tri County Electric for plating a property not inconsistent with the current and any subsequent moratorium ordinance. Second.
Mr.?
With the exhibit.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, with the exhibit.
Still second.
So, I have a motion, seconded by Mr. Wadley. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear none nays. That will pass 6-0. Mr. Vale?
Yes. Yes, make a motion to authorize the City Manager to execute moratorium development agreement with Blackburn LLC and 7-Eleven corporate entities.
Second.
Mr. Overdeer seconds that motion. No discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear none nays. That will pass 6-0.
Mr. Mayor?
Give more.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the City Manager to negotiate a development agreement with Black Tie Aviation consistent with the terms as set out in executive session.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Corgan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear none nays. That will pass 6-0. You have more?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the City Manager to execute a wholesale water agreement with Caris Ventures and a tri-party resale agreement with Caris Ventures and Brazo River Authority.
Second.
Mr. Wadley, seconded that motion. Discussion, no? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear none nays. That passes 6-0. Mr. Vale?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the City Manager to terminate the current lease with Raven Aerials and to, excuse me, Raven Aerial Solution and to execute a lease in the new FBO consistent with the rental terms discussed.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Overdeer seconds the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear none nays. That two passes 6-0. Mr. Vale?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the City Manager to execute a lease agreement within the pattern flight school consistent with the terms as set out in executive session.
Second.
Mr. Wadley, seconded that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear none nays. That passes 6-0.
Mr. Mayor, and finally, I'd like to authorize the City Manager, make a motion to authorize the City Manager to execute all future moratorium development agreements consistent with the parameters set out by the council in executive session.
Second.
Mr. Overdeer, seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear none nays. That two will pass 6-0. Council, other motions?
We're done here.
I hear no other motions?
I feel like a mule.
Mr. Kaufman?
A rented mule here.
Was that a motion? Yes, Mr. Rodriguez.
Mayor, I, we can have the City Manager give us information on the point of contact for the Tri County Electric.
Mr. Kaufman, you'll work with that?
Yep, I'll get that to y'all.
Yeah, as long as we're loading you up.
Yeah.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. We'll get that for council. Other comments, questions? No? Any other business? No further business? If there is no further business, I announce this meeting adjourned.